Okay. So, the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 14th is called to order. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of January 5th, 2005. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from January 5th, 2014.
Second?
Uh, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, shall we take a vote? All in favor of passing the minutes of Monday, January 5th? Say aye.
Aye.
Any notes? Motion carried. Okay. Uh, any announcements?
I have one announcement, except I forgot the form, so I'll have to send you the link. But, V-Trans is using a Wiki map to collect information about bicycle routes and bicycle infrastructure problems. If you read I Brattleboro, we had put it up on there. They're accepting comments until February 14th. They're kind of trying to get some public input as to what are, you know, the popular routes and what are the problems, so that as they do their bike plan, they can, you know, look at these areas and maybe try to prioritize where they can spend their -- probably not enough funding. But anyway, so we want Brattleboro to be heard, so I will send you that link.
And will you send it to those people from the ARP group?
Because they were very bike-oriented.
Yep.
Great.
Anything else? All right, let's move right into our zoning bylaw work. Brandy?
Okay. We want to talk at all about -- oh yeah, we have public coverage now. Okay. I didn't know which order we had to put things in.
We can flip it if you--
No, I think this is fine. I think we should try to get through the subdivision. So, we drop off at the subdivision, Chapter 340, on page 3-72 of your 1127-14 draft.
Oh my God, it's right here in front of me.
So, what this attempts to do is to take the draft subdivision regulations that you had worked on last--
Last year.
--year, basically beginning of 2014, and integrate them into this document. So, and also sort of responding to some of the feedback that you had gotten and not really made those changes yet, I had talked about. So, working with Sue, I have sort of integrated those things together. So, this begins with general standards for subdivisions. This is fairly standard subdivision language, speaking to, you know, basically you need to be able to have land that's developable and buildable and safe to use. Talks about protection of natural resources, renewable energy. It then mentions that if you're in the flood district, remember to stop here and go to Chapter 250. We have that caveat in numerous places in the regulations. So, these are all just sort of the basic starting points for subdivision regulations. It also has language related to development envelopes in it, which would allow the DRB to designate the area where the development would occur on a lot. This is very useful for larger lots, if you wanted to keep development out of particular resource areas or things like that within a larger lot. It allows for driveways serving up to three lots of dwelling units, and then beyond that, you would be looking at creating private roads. Most of the town was going to take and make them public roads, but-- driveways?
Right.
And private roads for the most part. Some very basic standards related to water and wastewater, for the most part. The town is not deeply involved in that outside to a service area. Basically, they need to meet state regulations and show that they have nothing. We reference back to some of the other standards. That's the one good thing about integrating this, is that we will be sharing the road and driveway standards and sharing the erosion control and stormwater standards with the other parts of the draft, so there isn't a need to repeat it. I think one of the interesting things in here, and I think this is partially in here drafted, I elaborated on it because it was one of the feedback comments, was related to taking topsoil off of site of lots during the development process. So, the final 341-K, topsoil, basically mandates that you're not going to strip the topsoil off of the lots and then sell that off and have substandard soil remaining that may or may not ever grow much of anything.
Creating a dust bowl.
Yeah. So that, those are just the broad standards that apply to all subdivisions. Any questions on 341?
Can I just ask you a question on debris? We got a little feedback from that, and it was like, whoa, this is, you know, the standard one through five, the, you know, where it could be located. They were like, oh, that seems like excessive to put that all in there. That actually is the distances in the state regulation, and one of the reasons that I included it in here is because we had no requirement that stump dumps be shown, and I actually think that is important because it can settle and you don't want, you know, future owners might want to know it's on their property, and so I didn't know if you had any thought about this, because it's not typically--
It isn't typical language. I think it is a good idea, because yeah, technically that's not what you're supposed to be building on.
I like it when you put the state regulations in, because it makes you understand it without having to go to five different statutes.
Do you want to reference that it is state? Can you include it?
I'd have to, it is probably the solid waste disposal permit or something.
Yeah, I can look for the reference point.
Is it, yeah, is it worth referencing it?
I think that would probably make it clear that it's not, you know, stuff that's being made up and that it's--
Yeah.
You know, certainly the question that might come up in my mind, I'd be like, oh, well, oh, it's state law, okay. And I wouldn't ask the question.
Right.
Might just be more efficient in terms of communicating to people. We've had some situations where there actually was debris on a site, and it's like, well, wait a minute, there's no permit here, and they didn't have their state permit either. But it's like, you might be fine with it, but the next person that comes in--
Yeah.
They don't know.
Because, yeah, and because the interval between one, this, you know, one action and another can be really long, and the reference is not 100% dependent, then you can, you know, people can be in jeopardy, you know, just out of sheer ignorance decide to put something somewhere that was factored down. I think we've, yeah, we've had examples in the time of big fires of that kind of--
Is there, um, if you're referencing state law or state, you know, regulatory things in here, does it become an issue of then keeping it updated if it changes? I can't imagine it changes right now.
It depends on how you have worded it. So, it's careful, it's important to make sure that you're not incorporating the state law in by reference unintentionally, so that if the state law changes, if it was incorporated by reference, yours would. So, but by repeating the language in here and just putting in a notation that, you know--
You're making it your own, kind of.
Yeah.
It doesn't, if the state changed, you wouldn't necessarily have to change--
You necessarily have to change yours. So, it's a little bit of a matter of how it's written.
Some antics.
Good.
And, you know, if we're paying attention, we should catch it. I mean, it's, you know, if the state's doing their notification properly and we're doing our email properly, it should--
But in the interim, it's not going to invalidate our regulations.
Yeah. So, Section 342, this is the standards that apply to major subdivisions.
On this one, I just noticed that in 342A--
Yep.
--the sentence just kind of drops out.
We are still working on cross-referencing the road standards. So, we're working on cleaning up the current subdivision, your draft subdivision, and what exists in public works. So, this is probably going to be a little bit of a loose end, but we'll, by the time we come back around to the second draft, we will have tidied it up.
Okay. Part of the reason why I brought that up was because when we were talking about the street design, the public works had wanted any new street to be paved--
New public street.
Public street, I guess, and we had discussed how if it was a subdivision in a rural area coming off of a dirt road, it wouldn't make the most sense to have a dirt road turned into--
A paved road turned into a dirt road.
Yeah, and have kind of like tuck-marked paved streets all over the rural area. I don't know.
I think that the goal is to get the standards for the rural areas to, as much as possible, maintain rural character, recognizing that there are other interests--
Yeah.
--that advocate for other reasons, valid reasons, things like fire truck access.
Yeah.
So, we have to balance these interests. And we're working on that.
Yeah, we're doing awesome with balance.
We're trying to balance. But that, the one good thing about that is that because we're integrating these together, we will be able to put the one set of road standards in, and then we'll go into the engineering portion, which is what that cross-reference will go to. And so, the PUDs language and subdivision language will all feed off that same road language, which will help with consistency, so--
Great.
Otherwise, this major subdivision section is not, I don't think there were any other real significant changes from what you had previously drafted. One thing again here is that we were able to cross-reference back against the landscaping standards we already have, so again, the subdivision doesn't need to have its own separate landscaping standards, those are cross-referenced.
Is the municipal impact questionnaire included in these documents?
I can hear you.
Is the municipal impact questionnaire that we discuss under municipal impact, is that form going to be included in here?
It could certainly be an appendix, if you would like it to be.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
So, they can at least know what they--
What's expected of them.
What they're going to have to look at, yeah.
Do they have to do that now? Act 250?
Yes.
So, is it an Act 250 form?
I think that's what we had agreed that we were going to use.
So, maybe we should reference that the same way that we reference the other state things?
So, Section 343, the standards for neighborhood subdivisions, these are essentially the subdivisions in the developed districts, everything except for the rural residential and rural districts. Lot yield is based off the density of the district and the area of the lot.
Do we have this already? These three different standards?
We did, yes. Yeah, that's the way we drafted it, yep.
And, you know, these, I don't think, I think these numbers are pretty much what was in your draft. I don't think these changed significantly. There's some basic standards for the layout of lots, for amount of open space, that type of thing in here.
Is there any more guidelines for 344D site analysis?
I'm going to the next page or--
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, in three, well, we'll jump ahead to 344 if there was nothing in 343. So, the rural subdivision, this is where, this is a little bit different from the last draft of the subdivision that you looked at. I tried to take the feedback that you had received and work with that to do a bit of a revision of this section.
Isn't this what we worked on, oh, last year?
Yes.
All those charts and--
Yes.
All that stuff, is that--
Yeah.
Is that missing, or is that still in here or being changed?
The illustrations are going to go back in. They're not in here at this point, but the intent is to get the illustrations back.
How we determined lot density, I mean--
Yeah.
We went through a number of meetings trying to--
We've made a couple of tweaks to that based on the comments that we received, where we did have some public input about it.
And I did put in some footnotes that sort of indicate where the changes have occurred. So, in terms of calculating what's the developable area, and that's under 344C, you have a list of features that will be subtracted out from the total lot area before that density calculation is made. Your previous draft had flood hazard areas in there--
Yeah.
--and the recommendation is to take that out at this point, but I put the riparian setbacks in at 100%. You had put them in at 50%. I think that that complicates the math a fair amount. I've been explaining to people that now you have to take this total, figure out the total area, then dividing it in half and apply that. And it's probably on most of these lots, given what the base densities are, it's not going to be, make a huge difference in the number of lots that you get at the end. So, it, that seems like an unnecessary complication.
So, are you having the riparian setback as a proxy for the flood hazard area?
It's, you know, it certainly would overlap in many cases. In some places, the riparian setback would be wider, in some places it would be narrower. It's dependent, you know, on the topography essentially.
Right, and the other part about this, if it, actually, we should sort of flag this for a discussion later. If it were an Act 250 application, then it would be subject to the state's river corridor mapping as well, which is not the same as the riparian buffer and not the same as a special flood hazard area. And so, I guess my comment here is that we are now being encouraged in that special way that the state does, to have our own rules reflect the rules of the river corridor procedure. Is that your sense?
I think they would like to see that happen, yes. It's obviously your policy decision to decide at this point whether you want to go in that direction.
So, I just want to understand the rationale for taking the flood hazard out, just because it's overlapping?
Well, there's already restrictions on actually building in that area. We obviously also have the riparian thing, so it seems like a bit of an unnecessary doubling of that.
And in some, and in some properties, it's really restricting the yield or decreasing the yield that you can get, and when the idea is to cluster it away from it anyway, why it, the kind of--
Why use it as a penalty?
Yeah, as a penalty, because they're not going to be able to develop there.
Yeah. It's already kind of a no-go zone. Sit there and like counted if it's no, if it's already a known--
Yeah, I see what you're saying, okay.
Okay. It's like a double counting kind of--
It's a double--
Yeah, it was, yeah.
It's a double count.
And the riparian setback--
I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Those range by districts in some ways, so that's, you know, a little more reflective. But in these two districts, I think they were at the 50 and 100, I think. But those cover the smaller streams, whereas the flood hazard would, in most cases, go up to smaller streams. So, in some ways, people, you know, it wasn't, the flood hazard isn't perhaps quite as equal and equitable in treating the people on water from properties.
It's true. Yeah, I think on smaller streams, the riparian buffer is more, sort of more determinative of what would happen, and the special flood hazard area may not be present at all.
Okeydoke.
Can I, so, when you're referencing wetlands, I mean, in this one, it says, you know, you may hire a qualified professional to do a wetland delineation, but if you're referencing wetland, are you only, is it only the ones that are on the state map, or it is?
That's how we were going to have this established at this point. It's how it's set up now, is that unless you want to change that, we'd go off those mapped wetlands, someone could do a delineation on their property, or in some cases, they maybe have to for a state permit, they may end up having to do a delineation. But there's nothing in this document right now that would necessarily require a delineation. I think that the DRB has that kind of authority, that in cases where they thought that a delineation was needed, that's something they could request, but there's nothing that mandates it upfront.
Okay.
This is the second question we've had on this, Brandy, and I'm wondering if we should tweak this language a little bit to make that clear, or at least like when it, because we say that we'll provide the subdivider with certain information, I mean, maybe we should at least be specific as to where we're getting that information--
Yeah.
--so that it's not like a--
As shown on the state map.
Yeah.
Which is honestly kind of horrifying to me, because like--
I know. You know, the state map is missing a lot.
But between that and the riparian, we should probably catch most things.
No, because you could have isolated wetlands that are not, you know, that are--
Right.
--or near a riparian area.
I think that back when, in the wetlands section, when we discussed about it, we described them as mapped wetlands, mapped by the town or state.
Did we define it in Part 5?
I don't know if I put it in the definition, but I think that that's in the part that we have in Part 3 that deals with wetlands. So, one possibility is that, as it's written, is that if the town did pursue doing more detailed natural resources inventory--
Then they could cite their own data.
Right, those could be incorporated in at a future point, so if you did get more--
Because right now, we just didn't want to add that expense to the development process of the delineate.
To make them delineate. Yeah, I don't think you would want--
No.
No, I don't think you would want to--
Right.
--make them do that, but I, but it's like, but at the same time, if there's a, there's a pretty clear wetland, it would be nice if it had been already defined as a wetland, so that it could be protected, you know?
I think, again, the Act 250, any large development, the Act 250's got, like, going to have to survey for--
For that.
--for wetlands anyway. So, it's a threshold detail, but it, which still, you know, means there's potential for serious issues here.
It's probably more of an issue, I mean, given the, I don't know, I mean, that's not true. I was going to say, it's probably more of an issue in like the underlying towns necessarily than the areas that could be developed in Brattleboro, but that's probably--
I think that--
I think there could be some unmapped. I mean, I think the topography of the western part of the town makes--
Yeah.
You know, I don't think it's like a huge risk that there's unmapped.
Yeah.
They probably exist.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And just then, the follow-up question is, do you know, is the conservation committee, like, is it on their plan to do a natural resources inventory? Just haven't gotten to it yet.
That's a big undertaking, I would think.
They've talked about it in the past. I think that they would need--
They probably need a grant.
They would need some funding. I think they'd want to work with some, they don't feel like they have the skills, the technical skills right now, or the professional skills some other conservation commissions sometimes have to do it. It's not been-- They are talking about doing a scenic resources inventory, so they'll be doing that through the spring, or probably starting up in the spring.
So, those were, the proposed tweaks to the developable area component of the density calculation. So, the density factor, this is another place where I proposed making a change and actually making those match the minimum lot sizes in the zoning districts. So, you had a factor of two, but the, in the rural residential, but the underlying minimum lot size is one and a half, and four in the rural, and the minimum lot size is three. So, my thought on that is that it's a lot more logical and easy to explain to people if the density factor is the same as the minimum lot size in those districts.
And we did have some consternation about that in the public outreach, so--
And I kept that idea that if you're coming off a Class 4 road, it's at 12, so that's the same as the original draft.
So, so should it be what, what is in the zoning, or should the zoning be changed to-- Well, the reason we talked about doing 12 off a Class 4 is this, what you're asking about, is we really wanted to discourage any new development down a Class 4 road, because as you get more and more development than the desire of those people to--
Upgrade the road.
Upgrade the road, and the cost to municipal services and all that. So, we actually really did want to keep that down low. So, that's the thinking there.
Was this a little chart, wasn't this a little chart when we did it?
Yep.
Yep.
Then we'll go back in.
And I, yeah, I will be putting the charts and illustrations back in, but, so that would be your, your calculations on the lot yield. And then we finally get to 344D, where you had a question, sorry.
Well, you know, I, let's go to the one before, the density bonus. I thought there were density bonuses for a variety of things.
There were some density bonus language in your draft. I am suggesting reverting those back to PUDs, so that if you want the density bonus, you go through the conservation subdivision PUD, which we're going to be looking at here.
Oh, so the conservation subdivision is only as a PUD?
Is a type of PUD.
Okay.
It sort of gets rid of the need to have the language tracks.
Not really, okay?
No, it's just--
Really, I mean, that's really what you were laying out.
Yeah, it's just, we're familiar with X and we're seeing Y, that's all.
I thought we were, I thought there had been some talk about the PUDs, about trying to get a wave, or am I thinking of institution?
Well, I think that's the next thing that we're going to talk to.
Yeah.
So, they're different from how they are now.
They're very different from how they are.
The label remains the same, the guts--
The name is the same, but the--
The name is the same, but the guts is different.
It's more like a real PUD now.
Yeah, right. It's like the rest of the world--
So, stay tuned for that.
It's like the rest of the world understands PUDs now.
Can I just, this is from my totally ignorant point of view, like, what, why, what's the difference between a subdivision, I mean, it's going to be obvious as we go through it, but like, why is there like a subdivision and a PUD as opposed to it just being one big, like, if you're dividing stuff up, it would be one or the other.
Subdivision and PUD, you see, sort of think of them as overlapping circles. There's a lot of them, a lot of the things that fall in are, fall under both. They're both a PUD and a subdivision, but it's possible to have PUDs that aren't subdivisions and subdivisions that aren't--
Sounds like a Venn diagram to me.
So, it's a Venn diagram, yes. So, the residential ones tend to be a lot, a residential PUD tends to be a lot like a subdivision, in that usually the land is plotted out into individual lots and they get houses and, you know, except for--
Create frontage by building a road.
Yeah, except for perhaps the layout of those houses, there's not much difference between the PUD and the conventional subdivision in its structure. I mean, ideally, there's lots and roads that can piece of it. But there's also the type of PUD that you could use for a campus, where it's all one big piece of property.
Okay, so you're not actually needing to subdivide the land, but you still need to have some--
Must have land approached.
Standards for how you're developing the property.
So, the PUD covers both of those types of things, and it allows adjustments from the underlying zoning, so that typically you might only have to meet the dimensional standards in terms of like setbacks and such around the perimeter of your PUD property, but what goes on inside of it, that development? You have more flexibility about lot sizes and setbacks and frontages.
Especially for like industrial or business kind of, like, business campuses and stuff.
So, that's why you end up having, you need both of them, even though a good portion of your residential PUDs are going to be fairly similar to a subdivision, and you could actually deal with them through subdivision language as well, like you had written in your earlier draft.
Be the place where things like, I don't know what you call them, I think a little cottage community that might not have roads--
Well, we're going to have one of those.
It's in there.
In the PUD process, yeah. Okay, because, you know, it might be one acre, but you can only park on the perimeter and the rest of it's walking.
Yep.
She's got it covered. So, the only remaining question then I have is that for this developable area, we were kind of, we were chopping off potential and putting it back in the density bonus. So, now people have to have a PUD to get that density.
Yeah.
But I don't think, it is a change from what we were doing, I mean, it's still there, you want to get it back, you do, and maybe even more, you do the PUD, and you do it as a conservation subdivision. Doing it, you know, doing a-- Doing it, you know, doing a developable area, you know, starting there is pretty common. It's not...
Yeah, I don't think it, yeah.
Even when we met, one of the surveyors told us like...
It's pretty standard in southwestern New Hampshire, in small towns that don't have planning staff. That's just not what goes.
I think it's pretty, I think from the different regs I've seen, like in the 89 corridor in Vermont, it's not uncommon either to subtract it.
And I think the other side of this to think about is what is in reality buildable on these properties that don't have sewer? And in many cases, the septic is still going to be a far more limiting factor than the underlying density of the zoning district, particularly in the rural residential.
And that's an important point to hold on to when we go into the public outreach process. So, you know, we're gonna be constantly questioned on, are these new rules, why are they so much more restrictive than the old rules? And therefore, what are the implications of that? And I think that in many instances, what we're doing is adopting practices that are commonplace in other parts of, you know, the state or the region. And that there are other features, you know, there are other factors beyond our immediate purview that are much more likely to explain what happens on the ground than these rules, these new rules and the way they get applied. So septic suitability would be one huge area where the build, you know, the buildability or the density that you could achieve in a particular parcel, particularly in rural residential or rural, is going to be a determinative factor, just the expense and complexity of actually achieving that. And then other factors too, including just market acceptance. So, which is not to say that, you know, these regulations should be blind to those issues, and I don't think they are. But I think it's important for us to hold on to, look, you know, when somebody goes to develop a piece of land, there's a lot of different factors at play. Sometimes it can even come down to, if I can offset the cost of development because there's a stand of trees that have significant market value, then my margins are slightly better than if the large parcel of land has trees of no value that I still have to get rid of. So, you know, there are a lot of factors in land development that we don't speak to and are not conversant with, but we should remember in that when people are questioning us.
I think particularly in the rural residential district where you're essentially at the kind of one and a half acre type of density, you know, you're, you're at the upper limit of what's likely to be achievable unless you have a very good well-perking piece of property.
Yeah, I would say it's almost magical to think of many of the hillsides in west Brattle, the western part of Brattleboro, to have, be able to accommodate a driveway, a house, a well, and a septic.
And backup.
And backup. Well, you don't necessarily need that anymore, but in an acre and a half, it's just inconceivable to me.
Is it, can developers build the infrastructure for the town out to where they want to develop as part of an option?
Theoretically, yes.
It's probably more expensive, but...
They could do it through a development agreement. And, but, you know, the basic proposition there is, it's hugely expensive. And so that would alter the, you know, the price point of what you're offering and probably automatically make it...
Shut it down.
You wouldn't be extending the sewer more than to the next property down if you were only gonna put one house for every acre and a half on it. The cost just wouldn't work.
It's pretty good. You know, a reasonable septic system is, you know, with a contemporary design, it's probably, you know, ingegating payment, it is upwards of $10,000. But to run a sewer line, you know, 200 feet is plus double that. You know, it's, it just doesn't look out very well pretty soon.
Unless the sewer line's at the corner of your property, you're probably not extending it.
And, you know, so, yeah, it's, I think, and it would be interesting for us to engage in a discussion hypothetically about somebody wanting to extend the sewer line. There are many other entities within the town that would be involved in that dialogue. And we don't plan for that, which, you know, the town plan doesn't encounter that topic, and the utility service doesn't encounter that topic. I don't think it's, it needs reasonable to operate with the assumption that no one is...
No one in their right mind, whatever.
No one's thinking about it, let's just put it that way.
It's done, right?
It could be done.
It was done with Delta Campus.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that's...
It's doable, when we've done it recently.
To Gelford, right? Or without water?
Uh, there are two things. So, this is just a sidebar, but so really quickly. Algie's Village is serviced by a pipeline for water, for sewer that runs to the Welcome Center. And because the line runs to the Welcome Center, they tapped into it. That, that's just sort of a happy coincidence. And then it's the water supply to Delta Campus that comes from ExaMon Industrial Park. And that's relatively new, four years old. And that's dedicated to that, to that development and specific. And then they, Delta Campus, their wastewater goes to the Algie system, which is serviced by the pipe that runs to the Welcome Center. So it's just that, another weird happy coincidence.
They got lucky?
All right, and then so the polar opposite question of that is, is anything in this precluding someone doing a subdivision where like there, everything's using composting too?
Um, I, I believe that these rates are written away though.
That could work.
If they can get their state permits...
They can get the state permit.
If the state is longer than, yeah, they're good. There's nothing in these regulations that would stop that.
So this is still set up with the same process that you had in your draft, where they start with a site analysis, so that there is a thorough site analysis done, and that's used as sort of decide where best to develop and where best not to develop on the property. And I think that this is the list, the same list that you have in your draft.
It is the same list. The zoning administrator questioned me about, especially some of the cultural resources and stuff, what is the source of that information? And, you know, are there any sources of those information? Of course, cultural, not necessarily. The public view sheds, you know, conservation commission's trying to work at some of the key ones. But also, it's more of a site-specific thing. So, you know, for me, it's kind of like, you gotta engage with your property.
Yeah.
Walk it best you can, and kind of document those things. It is somewhat subjective for some of them? If you have any thoughts on that?
I mean, some of those things with, there's, you know, obviously some knowledge of things like cemetery and some of the historic buildings, and maybe some state inventory information. But, you know, stone walls and, you know, that are moving the road, you might know about, but if they were interior ones, you might not know of.
Just, things that I, you know, I've encountered are the personal cemetery, you know, the cemetery, crips, foundations from abandoned homes and barns, uh, mill wheels and other, you know, included where they've, you know, constructed canals to provide, you know, water as power to mills, small mills. And, you know, sometimes if you establish that that foundation or whatever, or the chimney, the standing chimney is actually from a schoolhouse or a church, sometimes that can be established by looking at old maps or talking to neighbors and so forth. All those things I just listed, I've either lived in or I've walked by, you know, within, within, you know, 40 minutes of where I am now. So, you know, there's a, there's a schoolhouse, there's a now chicken shed, and that kind of stuff. I mean, you know, they're just, they're known kind of things.
Yeah, they're kind of known things, so we're not trying to...
You know, like on the hill that I live on, there are three repurposed schoolhouses that date from a period where the kids, you know, walked to school. And so there was three on the hill, right? And it's not a very, you know, the hill, it's not a very big hill. So, you know, it could be in that, I mean, I'm not saying it was...
And so the kids walking to school had to go uphill both ways?
Of course. In the snow.
In the snow.
With no shoes.
With no shoes. But, you know, I think that what I'd say is that, yeah, it's an, it's an expectation that they do engage with the land, yeah.
This goes under cultural resources, right?
That's right, and that's why, that's why they would all count for me as cultural resources.
Yeah.
So this does also keep with the idea that you can reduce, just in the basic subdivision within the rural area, you can reduce the minimum lot size and cluster the lots. So, I mean, that's a little bit towards your PUD idea, but it doesn't have what the PUD has, which you'll see when we get there, which is a requirement to have a certain amount of open space so that there's sort of enforced to a certain level, the amount of clustering that has to happen. And then there's a provision that if it's a major subdivision, it has to go through as a conservation subdivision and through the PUD process. So you have that minimal open space requirement.
So this, this process allows the one or two lots that you want to give to your kids better than the other one did. I think that was something that wasn't really fleshed out very well in the draft. So I like how that does this. And a major subdivision, I think, is five lots or building a road. So then you're gonna get forced...
Okay, so this is the big clincher here at the end.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, and look, here we are.
Yep.
There you go, Karen.
Okay. So we come to chapter 350, the planned unit development standards. And this is an entirely different approach to planned unit development than you've seen before in your current regulations. So this sets up a variety of different types of PUDs and establishes where those types, yeah, there's four or five of them in here, where those types of PUDs would be appropriate, and which districts are loaded, and what sorts of incentives go along with those, and flexibility goes along with those. But the underlying idea that you would just sort of create essentially a new zoning district and establish whatever sort of rules and mix of uses and such that you wanted within that as part of the PUD, that would go away. So basically, the PUD is no longer going to allow an adjustment in the underlying uses of a district. So whatever zoning district you're in, those uses still apply. What you get flexibility with are the dimensional standards, and potentially you get bonuses in terms of density, with the requirements. So it's quite a different approach. And you no longer need to go get a zoning map amendment.
Right, so it just goes to the DRB, they're...
Yes.
They're the review board. It doesn't come to the planning commission, it doesn't go to the select board.
It doesn't bounce between.
Because it's not a use change.
It's not a use change.
So there's cottage cluster...
Right. There's a traditional neighborhood development. There's one for campus development. There's one for net zero, sort of an energy-oriented one. And there's a conservation subdivision.
Okay.
And it, um, what was I gonna say about it? Campus could be like a school, but it could also be a hospital.
Yes.
Put it also in history.
I think most of the PUDs we have now...
What's his name out there on the way to Gelford there?
Delta Campus?
Delta Campus, yeah.
Yes, sure.
So business.
Oh, I know, I remember what I was gonna say.
But that's mixed too, because he wanted eventually to put housing up there too.
Yes, and you raise an interesting point about at what point, when that doesn't happen, does something have to happen to documentation?
Yeah.
The other thing is, is you can do a PUD anywhere because it's more of a development.
Strategy or approach.
Strategy, yeah, as, you know, so...
So to be clear about that...
And keeping the existing zoning, but having this add-on of a PUD.
So to be clear about that, then PUDs are permitted in whole zoning districts now?
Well, actually, that's not, that's probably not accurate. Some of these PUDs are only allowed in certain districts.
Each of those zoning districts.
Yeah, so I guess it's not, they're allowed everywhere, but...
I think most of the districts do have at least one of these types that's allowed within them. The only one that maybe doesn't is the water and recreation.
Right.
But to a different point, it's, it's allowing much greater flexibility and a lot less bureaucracy.
Yes.
Yeah, tons less, tons less.
A lot less bureaucracy, for sure. I think, right now, our PUDs are really a free-for-all. So there are some, there's regulations on the density. I mean, it's definitely over and above what the base zoning district is. But, you know, those are some things that don't exist now. But I think it's standard to have a, to have that kind of control.
So it's basically creating a framework, a general outline for what is allowed with, as a PUD, and then letting the developer design something inside that framework. So it's not wide open.
It's not wide open, but it's not.
But it does give us, David, just much more flexibility.
Yes.
So the first type is this cottage cluster development. And this is a residential type of PUD. So it's allowed in the residential neighborhood and the rural residential districts. This aligns with the idea of, you know, smaller households, smaller living units. It lines up well with efficiency and affordability goals from the town plan as well. This is becoming a housing type that there seems to be a growing interest in.
Pocket neighborhoods that get filled, that get put in places.
This is for the residential and rural residential.
Residential districts.
That's a huge...
It's a lot of town.
It's a lot, large portion.
And it comes with a bonus, so you actually have a density that's 200%. So it's a doubling of the underlying density of the zoning district. Probably not as critical for the residential neighborhood, that density, just because the housing type and the underlying density that we already have, they probably line up pretty good. Maybe get a little bit more that way. But certainly in the rural residential, if you could deal with the septic side of the equation, depending on the location, that could be a benefit for those.
We could have a community septic, you know...
You could do the community septic.
Community septic plan.
Yeah, and come up with something.
Can you just kind of marry the language from the subdivision where it says, you know, maybe eligible for a density bonus, and then clearly call out what the density bonus is? Because, well, I mean, maybe it would be obvious, but it's kind of like not. I could read this and say, oh, okay, you get that, but it's not, you know, someone might misinterpret that there's some other additional bonus because you're not...
Yeah, each of the types that has a density bonus that goes along with it has a section in it that says density. So like 352C is the density bonuses. So you have to sort of select your type and then see what is required of that type of PUD.
No, what I'm saying is, can you say 352C density bonus, period?
Oh, okay.
And then, so that it's clearly, like, that is what the other part is referring to. That is your bonus.
But...
Or is that a, is there some other...
Is there a conceptual problem with that? Because you wouldn't necessarily... Would it matter if you don't take, say you're a developer and you don't take the bonus? Does it matter that you don't take the bonus?
It doesn't matter that you don't take it, and I see what you're going for. I mean, this is set up more like the zoning district language is set up, where it goes through purpose, density, dimensional use.
Well, does the landowner go through the whole subdivision process that we just went through about riparian and...
No, you wouldn't need to go through that whole process. You would go through, if you're gonna do, for, most of the rural ones are probably gonna come in under the conservation subdivision PUD type, which is the last one in here that we'll get to. That's probably the most applicable to the rural lands. And that one doesn't have a bonus in quite the same way. It just does a flat, so there's a de facto built-in bonus, and we no longer do that subtraction. But there's an open space requirement.
So I, so to your point, and, you know, jumping in...
Yeah.
I don't think it's beneficial to change the subheading from density to density bonus, per se. Because it relates to more than just the bonus that you're gonna score on.
And maybe it's actually better to go back to the subdivision.
And there may be an entirely different way of framing this, which may be more of like pointing out the positives or the additional...
I feel like almost like another sentence at the end of that density of 35, 352.0C, almost saying this constitutes... almost saying this constitutes the density bonus for this form of development in these districts.
See, I don't thi, I kind of like it just straight at density, because we're, it's just, it's de facto. I mean, it's like, if you're doing this, you get 200% of the, I don't know.
So it doesn't need to be.
That's what I was thinking.
I don't think it needs to be called out. I mean, you know, I kind of like, I'm a little unsettled by that out here.
I actually think that maybe we should go back to the subdivision section and take out bonus there.
Maybe, yeah.
Talk about density there.
Yes.
Because it does, they may be eligible for greater densities.
Yeah, I mean, a bonus. I think that would be a bonus. A bonus to me means that you're meeting certain things and then you.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, yeah, yeah. There is just something about the bonus that was like, seems like a prize, and it seems like it would be.
This is just the new, this is the new density standard for this form of development in this district.
Yeah, okay, so maybe taking it out of that.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the more logical way, is to go back and address it with the subdivision section. Then it's a different, another concept, a concept that doesn't have to get introduced.
What if it's a little like that?
Which is good, we're lowering the number of concepts.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, so we've dealt with the difference in the density, the increase you can get higher densities. The dimensional standards, so basically, within the interior of the development, the density or the dimensional standards for setbacks, yards, buildings, that type of, those numbers don't apply. You do have to meet the dimensional standards around the exterior. So if you're required to have, you know, a 20-foot side setback, that means, you know, unless the exterior, you need to have a side, you know, 20-foot setback or whatever those, you know, there are buffer requirements around the side, you need to have that. But inside the PUD, those things are open to redevelopment. And the lot coverage is now for the development as a whole. So whether the PUD is broken up into multiple lots or remains as one lot, the lot coverage will be counted for the whole PUD. So that allows for one part to be more intensively developed while another part is open space. So those are the dimensional standards. The uses, this is a residential type, so its residential uses only, no non-residential uses within a cottage cluster.
If somebody wanted to have a home business within there, would that be allowed?
Well, technically, you can't prevent somebody from having a home occupation. Now, a development like this may well have its own bylaws that may have some implication on this. These tend to be laid out to be pretty tight, little compact communities, so I have a feeling they may have some, so homeowners association type provisions to what they want and don't want.
Sure they will.
But from a zoning perspective, you can't prevent somebody from having a home occupation. But that's not another principal use, that's an accessory use of your property.
I have a question. On 252G, under Cottage Design, that very first sentence there, that it says it must be a single-family detached dwelling. And I know there's a little community in Greenfield that they were, the buildings were built as duplexes, and yet it's still a little cottage community, although it does have an internal road. So I guess under these specifications, it wouldn't quite fit. But sometimes it's beneficial to have.
Yeah, I could see allowing for two, for duplexes. I still don't think you'd want to allow for more than, they would be on that.
No, no, that's not the purpose.
The one up in Shelburne is duplexes. To be honest, the buildings are a little, a little bit on the edge of cottage, but they are nice affordable houses.
Are they on the main drag?
Yeah, they're on the main drag next to the, well, they're on the south side of the intersection, near the industrial park.
In Shelburne Falls?
Yeah, that's pushing, yeah, that's pushing the elements of cottageness.
They are on, yeah, they also have the internal road. They'd had the external, they'd done the road around the outside and put the cottages on the inside. It might have made it a little more, but on the other side, they were a good affordable housing project in terms of affordability.
Like the building I lived in, live in now, it's like a townhouse. It's four units, but it's not very large, really, in terms of the footprint that it takes up. And I could see a cottage community having, say, two of those.
Yeah, I agree.
For instance, I mean, then, I mean, when I think of a cottage community, I usually think of 800 to 1,000 square foot, you know, and all single family. But I could see, because, and I wouldn't have thought of this except for where I live and the way it's set up there, it's not even on a half acre, I mean, it's probably a quarter acre of land, you know? Yet there's enough yard for people to share, and, well, I guess, I'm not calling the parking is separate, but it's off from the property, too. You can only access your, it fits some of these criteria. And I've often fantasized creating a, on a small lot, like, say, two of those kind of buildings that could go together and still create a community of, you know.
There's that British Isles form that's all too, probably dating back to when there was the landlord of the manor, Lord of the Manor, and then.
That's right.
The village on the edge, but you would get.
Oh, Downton Abbey.
You Downton Abbey fans.
I think you may have occasion.
Oh my god. Oops. So like a series of terr, what I would call terrace houses, just like five, five homes in a row, each, you know, the two-end ones, you know, only having one party wall, but the sort of the three-in-the-middle having shared walls on both sides, and then kind of private gardens immediately in back, and then a kind of a shared open space.
Sometimes the buildings.
A little odd in the context of, you know, the 20th century, a little in the 21st, or the 19th century, but, and cars and a bunch of things, people's other expectations about amenity, but it's compact and it's more than, I wouldn't say this is inappropriate. So some version of townhouses, but in a rural setting, if you could follow what I'm saying.
I think the duplex is good, is enough.
A duplex is okay.
Yeah, I think the traditional neighborhood development one would accommodate more of the real house, townhouse-oriented development.
There was in a magazine, some that had, they were, I forget how you, what you, this is, I can't believe it, but just offset, so that you had some common wall, but it still allowed some privacy for, you know, each unit and.
But also, you'd think it would create some efficiencies in terms of the utilities and stuff, right? Because you could share a furnace.
And like the repercussions of the British version is that they're always damp and we're particularly likely to need privacy, but that was all the purpose of the concept.
I like that. So you could just change to single-family or two-family?
I think, yeah, two-family, yeah.
All that for one, three-letter word.
All right.
Well, let's just think, Alex has a four.
So what are you saying, Pam?
Two, two-family, go on.
Single, two-family.
Can I ask a question of the cluster size? So the four to 12 cottages, is that based on, is there some math here based on the district and the size and how many are logical?
It's sort of, think about the, that they're, they're intended to be clustered around an open space, and so just spatially, you know, how that could work. You're trying to create little neighborhood, little pocket neighborhoods, essentially. So you want enough of them, four, three or four, I would think you would want to be a real cluster of any sort, and you don't want there to be so many that they're not, the idea is that they're all gonna be sort of oriented to the open space, and if you end up with too many, then they're not gonna all be able to be oriented to the open space. While you could run those numbers a few in either direction, I would say that that's, you know.
Great, it's not gonna be 100.
Right, it's not gonna be 100.
So for three, I'm sorry, for two, size-wise, I mean, 1,600 square feet.
As a footprint, that's a really big.
Yeah, the footprint's pretty good for these, that's the maximum footprint. So there's sort of two avenues to deal with the cars in these. One is that they will have some sort of exterior car park area, or car ports, or exterior storage or vehicles. However, this is Vermont, and that works a lot better where it's noseless than here. So getting people to give up their garage component is going to be a bit of a challenge. So the 1,600 square feet does accommodate putting in an attached garage.
Yeah, so a 20-by-10 garage space, which is pretty standard, is, you know, is 200 square feet. So if you are gonna provide two car spaces for every little cottage, then that's 400, straight out of your.
You're right, right out of your footprint.
It still seems.
1,200 is still pretty juicy.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I mean, I think of it as a cottage. I mean, I would say you wouldn't want it to be any more than that, 1,600.
Well, no, we were thinking.
Well, now it's gonna be two units.
Yeah, I would go, I would, I mean, because we're talking footprint, too, so we imagine that it's two stories.
It's not a full two, you don't get a full two.
What does one and a half mean?
One and a half means that you don't have.
You have children upstairs.
It means that you, your full, your second story isn't all full height, so it'd be usually a, one and a half has a knee wall of three to four feet, and then the roof slope starts to go up, so.
So you could have a second floor, it's just that it wouldn't be the whole footprint.
Right, so think of a cape with doormats.
Right. Yeah, but I also think in these situations, they tend to be lots.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's like, maybe it's a bonus room.
Well, if you're gonna have only one and a half stories, 1,600 square feet means you're gonna end up with a huge, to me, doesn't mean a cottage again.
You're gonna have to specify a per-unit now that you can allow two.
This is true. So we could make, we could down that for a single family, but if you're gonna do duplexes together, then you're gonna need more than, I would think if you're doing the duplexes together, that we should probably abandon the idea of a car component to that building as well, or else it's never gonna look like a cottage, because by the time you put two car parking, potentially parking for four cars, and two living spaces together, you're never gonna get anything that reads as a cottage.
Yeah. And again, looking at my building, I mean, depending on the geography, I mean, you look at the front of my building and it looks pretty small, but we all have, because of the grade and where the building was placed, if there wasn't the brook there, we'd probably have access from the other side, but we all, each apartment has a lower level that's above ground and faces out to the brook.
We're gonna have to take a trip to your house.
Yeah, it sounds like, yeah, utopia.
So I would, I would argue for.
In all honesty, I would argue for, for limiting it to one garage space per unit.
And then a 1,200.
And then a 1,200.
Work with a 1,200 square foot footprint.
Maximum, maximum.
Because then that would be 1,000 square feet living, living space, which is a little bit, about the size of a standard cape, right, or a ranch?
In the old days.
Well, I mean, most people now have them in the 12 to 1400 range.
Yeah, it really is going back to, you know, the pre, mid-eighties.
Idea.
Well, when I go back home and I drive around, I mean, a lot of the houses in there were built post-World War II, but when I look at those capes, they're tiny.
They're tiny.
I mean, and I think, man, we lived in those with big families, I mean.
Children shared bedrooms.
It's crazy what we do now, you know, I mean. Yeah, I mean, those houses were probably only 12,000, yeah, most, you know, unless they built an upstairs, you know, expanded into an upstairs, but.
But isn't that what a cottage is supposed to be?
That's right, it is.
I think at some point, you get into that weird, like, Rhode Island-y, you know, Newport, oh, this is my cottage, and it's, you know.
It's like 4,000.
You're like, add around that great camp cottage.
That's right, yeah, no.
All right, so we gotta get back to the definition of what this is.
So I can go back and work on these numbers, but I'm here and get it down closer to 1,200, but I think we need to think about.
Per unit.
The duplexes, I don't think we necessarily want to go two 1,200s put together to 2,400. I think that's a bit problematic, so I think we should think about something that's, you know, if they're gonna be duplexes, they're gonna be small duplex, they're gonna be smaller units, and you could get it, they were singles.
And the footprint.
I agree.
Otherwise, you're gonna lose the cottage character.
When the Stukeys were gonna propose that lot down there on South Main, weren't those, they were duplexes, weren't they?
Yeah.
I can't remember if this one was.
Yeah.
They were a couple little, yeah, they were like three pods of them.
Do you know what, maybe the duplexes should be in the zero net energy buildings? Or let's go through all these.
Let's just, but think about that, and think about how much of that, you know, needs to go to garage, whether you want to limit that to.
I mean, also, also, too, I imagine, I mean, these are the maximums. I imagine anyone who has the kind of folk-society idea of cottage living would make the cottages in the more, in the more like 600 to 800 square feet range, you know?
Right.
I think when, they've been talked about in magazines and stuff, it's like 1,000 square feet or less. And it is what you're talking about, mostly like with a loft or a second floor, but it can't, you know, the knee wall.
Makes me want to build a shire.
Well, it was reminding me of the cottage in Lassie Camp Home.
All right.
Yeah.
So are we all happy with the rest of the cottage design?
We're gonna put a cottage neighborhood in that land across from exit two when you get off, you know, that they just cleared, that they thought they were gonna put the firehouse there. No, that's my fantasy for it, could be a little pocket community there.
Except they tore all the trees down.
So the, we come to H, this is common open space, so there's a certain amount of open space that has to be incorporated into the PUD, a minimum amount per cottage that cottages have to be oriented to them, and a minimum number of them, 50% of them have to actually directly abut that open space.
Now, you don't define what goes on in this so-called open space. So the things that could go on there that we might have a view about, that would get revealed through site plan would include, that's where the dumpster is for everyone's trash. That's where the, that's where the guest parking is.
No, there's not going to be any parking in there, that's, I think, pretty, pretty clear. The dumpster, everyone would have to look at it, so.
So the common space is in the middle, more or less, and doesn't?
Above-ground submarine propane tank.
Wouldn't they be behind each?
All that usually goes on the outside of a little cottage community.
All I'm saying is, I'm familiar enough with really poor, nice-planned apartment complexes in this part of southeast Vermont, where the so-called open space is where the dumpster is and the huge submarine for the gas.
So we may, we can add a provision here that basically says that it has to be.
Landscaped.
Landcaping, gardening, recreation.
Community space.
And not used.
Gathering space, not used for utilities.
Utilities are.
Parking.
Could be a rain garden, could be. Or a portion thereof.
In the next section, it addresses garages and carports and sheds not being more than 400 square feet. And Rod, you said that, I don't know, does 400 seem big?
That's a two-car.
400 square feet is a two-car, carport or garage.
Most cottage things are just gonna be one per household.
One would hope, yes.
Well, extra cars could get parked somewhere else.
Yeah, it's not that generous, 20 feet by 10 feet is not that generous for a car space.
I'm just worried about the garages dwarfing the.
Or a shed, I mean, yeah, I mean, that's a pretty big square footage.
Yeah.
They do have to not be lower, so they can only go up to 18 feet, so that is one way that they're held, but.
The scale.
Right.
Well, I'm just worried because, like, you could, I mean, you could end up with a scenario where you have a garage that's half the size of the house, you know? Like, let's say someone, they do an 800-square-foot cottage, and then they put a two-car garage on it, and suddenly you have, you know, half of the facade is the house and the other half is the garage.
Yeah, I mean, I think you see some bad examples of that around. Maybe we could try and avoid it, but I don't know what.
I'm just, I'm just worried about the garages taking away from the idea of the cottage community. And, but I also understand what you're saying, that you can't give them up entirely, because we live.
Can there be a ratio where it's not instead? Can there be a, a ratio where it's not, instead of it being four hundred square feet, it's a certain percentage of the size?
Well, it does also speak to, um, that you can't, if a private, so, detached carriage house, well, that was just for an accessory dwelling unit, yeah, sixty percent.
You could have a garage with an eight foot ceiling and get away with it, and then you could have a bedroom or a room above it, fit in the ten and a half requirement, might take a little bit of manipulation, so there's a way in which you could tuck at least one of the bays of the garage or carport under the heart, and then, so in terms of the massing, it doesn't stick out as separate from the house.
Yeah, I've, I've got some examples of these that, uh, some of them are that.
Right.
Where they've tucked it under, and some of them are where they've really sort of, there, there's a front cottage that are, then they're sort of all internal to this open space, and then there's the parts that are facing the street, and those are actually to a side street, and those are more the garage entrances.
Yep.
And I think some of them have accessory space above them from the ones I saw in, like, Seattle.
There's kind of an older condo complex south of Billington, almost on the lake. Remember when we drove around, when we were doing our research, this was there too.
Windshield survey.
That's right.
Um.
Do you know the place?
I think I do know.
Dark brown stain.
Dark brown.
Yeah.
White garage doors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so, I, I think I understand the concern about, there is that potential. On the other hand, I think that most of the people who would want to do this type of cottage development probably would come to it with, um, an aesthetic that's a little more towards the open space and the communal living aspect of it, but.
You'd be so, I.
Oh, here you go, with your faith in human nature again.
No one's ever accused me of that before.
Don't you feel better then?
I guess I, I come off as a much more.
I just think, well, I think, when it, like, so I, I recently started seeing someone in Connecticut and, who lives in this housing development from the eighties, and it's every single housing, it's a set of four townhouses with a four space carport in the front yard setback, so you have to walk behind the enclosed carport to get to the front of people's houses.
I don't think it's.
And it's down the entire neighborhood, and it looks, it's the most bizarre thing I've ever seen, and it's just, I think, a really good example of, like, you know, allowable development that just.
Went really badly wrong.
Looks horrible.
Should take a photo.
I should, no, it's, it's really, it's really awful, and it sucks because the townhouses are, you know, nice, it's a pleasant neighborhood, it's quiet, but.
So, I mean, I think we've got, the perimeter components from the districts are gonna protect against this sort of thing.
Yeah.
Uh, and it, we're really now getting to the internal design of how this is set up.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, there's sort of the, there are the two options to go with dealing with the cars that are accompanying this, and I think some of it's also related to where this was, would occur. The ones that are in the rural residential areas, I think it's, you know, reality is that there's gonna be one or two cars to go with everything in this housing. Um, the ones that are in the residential neighborhoods, I think it's possible that, you know, you could do with the shared parking and, you know, or more likely just one per unit and get down to something that is, we just have to sort of deal with the reality that the cars aren't going away quite yet.
But, so is there, if someone's gonna do a PUD, do they have to come through, I mean, is there a planning process where?
Yes, they will go through.
So if, so if they've got some plan and it's just totally tweaky, could you say, you know, it's.
I mean.
Or you just, you could make suggestions, but there's no teeth in this.
There's no teeth to it.
Well, I mean, there, there is some framework here for what you're trying to achieve, um, you know, the idea, and I can work on trying to improve the language a little bit, but, you know, they're not intending to be car dominated, in fact, they're intending to be the opposite.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting, but I feel like the focus on garages and stuff makes it feel like it.
Feel cars.
I was a little bit surprised by that, and it's like, well, if you're just silent on it, and you say at the end, you know, basically, we want parking on the periphery.
Yeah.
Are you gonna get more of what you want? I don't know, I mean, probably not. There's a lot of places like that in Germany, like, green development.
There's a cup housing development in Amist, um, where they are, I think a couple of, I think some of them are duplexes and some of them, it's a combination of duplexes, very large duplexes actually, often across three levels, and small family homes, and it has a ring road around the edge and structures that look so very similar to s- to compact squat barns, that's where the recycling and all that kind of stuff goes on, and that's where you park your cars, more and more of the point bicycles. They're Amist, so it's hip enough where they just dump their car, and then they have garden carts in internal pathways, and so kids and groceries go in the garden cart, and then you wheel it to your house.
I mean, I think that's more what I.
Yeah, I mean, that's very cool, but, you know, on some level, you know, anecdotally, I know that people move out of there when they have a member of their family that develops a physical, you know, disability or whatever it is, because, you know, there's some percentage of people who are like, it's not a, it's not an aesthetic choice thing, I need to be able to, like, get this close to the front door.
That's why I'm, that's, I, I guess that kind of speaks to my concern about these garages and carports overtaking this, cause then at what point does it start to feel more just like a traditional subdivision that happens to have some open space that people.
That's right.
That the building's faced towards, and less of this idea of really communal type living with very low dependence on.
Yoto.
On, I mean, on really like pri- private means which separates people and.
Yeah, to me, that cottage community is a little pocket community that, um, is different from the regular subdivision where you could have more, but you could do more of what you want. You know, this would be very specific, and, I, to me, this allows too, a little too much in there.
Can we add to the purpose statement and say that we wanna re- also reduce cars and then limit it to one garage per?
I think limiting it to one garage, that, that would assuage my concerns.
What about something really freaky, like, allow on-street parking?
I would love to allow on-street parking, you can get that through your department, of course.
Can't do that in the winter.
I mean, to be honest, that's, I mean, these are gonna have private roads, that's probably more of a possibility than if not, but, um, that's probably part of that road conversation we're gonna have. Um, I know, for instance, up in Colchester, their new town center, the reason that the roads are staying private there is so that they can have on-street parking. If they were to become public roads, it would not allow them to have on-street parking, and so that's, you know, if we look at those roads.
On public roads?
Yeah.
Not in the, not around, not in Vermont.
Oh.
Yes.
You know how it goes.
Well, and, yeah.
Okay, no, no. Someone actually has to explain this to me. Why not?
It's, it's, it's part of the culture of the state.
Keeping the roads clean.
If you wanna drive.
If it snows, if the snowflakes down.
But you know, if you live, let's say, up in like.
I've lived in places where it snows, and you can park on the street.
We have, we all have, yes.
Yes, that's true.
But they're not in Vermont.
Called Hopoka.
It's like, uh, it's like if you live on, for instance, Central Street off of Washington, and you get a ticket, and you ask the parking authority, and they tell you to park in the city garage and walk to Central Street. That's their solution, is everyone just park in the garage and we won't have a problem.
Walk for the road.
And literally the parking enforcement told me this.
That's not a battle that zoning can solve, it would be.
No, no, this, what, what is happening here is I'm learning, even after being here for ten years, of a whole cultural thing that I'm just completely sort of oblivious to.
It's, it's pretty much a statewide.
Cultural.
Moray.
Yes, but there cannot be on-street park, we do not park on the street, oh, in the winter overnight because of the need to clear snow.
It's like when people say the night air is bad.
Regardless if there is snow or not.
Right, and in rural settings, if you, if you are observing, you'll notice very frequently that people drive right to their front door.
That's right.
Like, you know, there's two steps between their truck and their front door, and that's where they park.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, and then there are other parts of the country where actually that's not what happens.
And tech- technically, on-street parking isn't allowed downtown year-round because in the summer they need to street sweep. I have also gotten a ticket for that.
We have a special meeting for you and David.
Zoning talk, with Kathleen and Dave.
It's a tragic segue.
Traditional neighborhood development section, but.
What a nice segue.
So we move to this one, so this, uh, is intended to replicate more of.
Three dash eighty-two? Yeah, no, no.
You, you okay?
Pre-war neighborhoods.
Pre-war neighborhoods, yes, replicate more of the, the traditional neighborhoods that you already have many fine examples of. Um, so it's allowed in many of the zoning districts, the village center, neighborhood center, mixed-use residential neighborhood, but it is meant to be a bit of a larger type of development, so it's on a, a two-acre or more site, so in your core areas, there's probably not too many open two-acre sites, but as we start to go out a bit, some, there'll be more.
Is this?
Some, but not a, a huge number, that this, you know, would be eligible for, but the idea is that this is really creating like a new block or, you know, a new, it's not.
More than.
It's not a little infill of a few houses, it's more, it's a bit of a larger development.
Yeah, orchard street kind of thing, there's land there that could be developed.
Natural.
I mean, this is like the back.
The bottom end of orchard, yeah.
That's your street right there. He's just picking on.
I know, I know.
Alright.
So.
You gave me a lot of ideas about our big property there.
Yeah, right. More cars.
Yeah.
So this is set up with a density system that, um, it's a hundred and fifty percent if you provide affordable housing for the additional, so the additional bonus, the, the extra units that you're getting, those would have to be affordable.
And is affordable defined?
It is defined, um.
I'm, I'm inclined to give the bonus regardless of whether it's affordable.
Affordable or not, do you wanna give more for affordable, or have no difference?
I'm gonna keep it market rate. Yeah, I'm, well, but, didn't you guys mention at, at some point that like, they're try- they're trying to get away from density bonuses for affordable? I thought I had, heard you mention that, but maybe I.
I mean, I think, I think there's an interesting dilemma here with Robert Rowland, that is, we have a really significant.
Rental housing.
Rental housing market.
So there's not some demand for it?
Well, there is always demand, and partly to do with the constant provision of affordable housing units and the quality of many of the existing single, you know, apartment dwellings, and so the other demographic that's interesting there is that we have a very high number of single-person households. So you take the single-person household and their income, and then you look at their housing setting, and they're frequently in the rental market for some obvious reasons, and so it stacks together in a particular way. And, you know, I don't necessarily believe that we need to be concerned about achieving some kind of equilibrium or balance between different kind of housing types and different kind of household types that are more inclined to use one common housing over another, but I would say that the provision of affordable housing as a percentage of our total housing stock is not a problem. What I would say we have is we have fairly expensive, you know, fairly high median house, you know, single-family home, you know, the, the market for, for homes is, you know, how do I say this the right way? Given the quality and their, and their look, and their, you know, their amenity, the cost of housing is still relatively high, right? So if you follow this formula for building a traditional neighborhood, I think we're talking about pretty modest homes on the basis of they're fairly small parcels, and you're gonna have pretty high density, so you should theoretically be able to achieve. You know, market, market rate or, you know, pretty.
Workforce.
Workforce house is what I'm, yeah, and I'm kind of wobbling around all those kinds of terms, but I don't think we necessarily need to, is that what you're saying, that you don't wanna mark out or, yeah.
Okay, so we can just put in a, the baseline a hundred and fifty, but this also has a minimum density requirement, but you have to provide at least seventy-five percent of what the base density in the district is, so that.
That's fine, so it's dense, so it's dense, that's fine.
Right, and so then that will get back almost to the picture that Carolina was drawing before, you know, the immediately post-war housing with pretty modest capes and ranches.
Yeah.
Okay.
So let's eliminate, um.
Yep.
Which.
So we'll get rid of the affordable requirement, it'll be more similar to how it is in the cottage where we just get a baseline percentage increase.
Taking out from provided.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, yeah, okay, that's good.
Same provision about dimensional standards, you have to meet the exterior and within the interior, you can look as allowed within the section. Uh, the uses as are allowed in those districts, so some of those districts allow for more non-residential uses than others, so it depends on the district what you could do. So some of these PUDs would be able to have mixed-use projects in those village center, neighborhood center and such. There are requirements about blocks, now, you probably, these are probably less critical, cause you're probably not gonna have too many large-scale projects that are create new blocks, but.
I don't know if we've got flat land, we'll go.
Go around blocks, yes. I think at a minimum you would want to leave the maximum block length in at a minimum component, the rest of this, um, I think, you know.
What would, uh, what would a thousand, is, is there anything you can think of off the top of your head that would be in-town, that would be comparable to a thousand? Or close to it, I'm just trying to get an idea of scale.
What that is, yeah.
Eight to ten houses in a row, if they're front edges like a hundred, something to two hundred.
Okay.
You know, if you were, the traditional neighborhoods tend to be somewhere six hundred to eight hundred foot blocks, that tends to be pretty common.
The, the tree blocks, you know, the tree neighborhood, they're, they would probably be in the six hundred foot. Range, six to eight maybe.
So we're talking.
That's pretty long.
So we're talking about taking out the minimum?
We could take, I could simplify this considerably by getting rid of the averages and just leaving in the maximum block lengths.
So no block exceeding sixteen hundred, or the first one a thousand, yeah. Yeah, I think the average, yeah, I think no block exceeding is preferable for me.
Good.
It's a little confusing with the aver- yeah.
And then you wanna take that average perimeter and just have maximum?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, I would get rid of the averages and just leave the maximums in there. So one thing that this does encourage is more cross-connections, which is a good thing for transportation, so. Uh, and then the lot standards, they're basically encouraging a form of development that replicates the traditional development of narrow lots along the street, generally lots narrower and deeper. So, in terms of building design, um, there's just some.
So, I'm sorry, just before we move on from lots, you go, you go for your average formulation at the bottom of that description of lots as well, do you wanna drop that or not?
Well, the, there's the average, the average is more important there, I think, that's what, you know.
Yeah.
Keeps the narrow, you know, fronted.
See the green arrow?
A question here, and I'm not sure if you address it in zero net energy development, um, at the bottom of page three, uh, three eight. At the bottom of page 382, under, under the building design, number one, all principal buildings must be oriented facing the street. And in my mind, that's one of the things that, how housing used to be done, in that that doesn't always make sense. That you might want to use your lot so that a certain portion of your house might even be the front faces where the sun is. I mean, with this, again, thinking about just being not an official passive solar house with the definition passive solar, but just a passive solar house that we have that we don't always put the front, I mean, that's just one of the big things, that you don't put the front of the house necessarily. It has to face the street.
So there's...
At your living areas that are...
There's a bunch of houses in Bradrow that are oriented differently.
Yeah, but it says here that they must have their front designed facing the...
I think the intent here with the traditional neighborhoods, from my understanding, is that these are developments that are going to be a natural extension of pre-existing development already. And so the idea is, is that you want it to blend so that the new development apart from the old one isn't markedly different.
But some people might have a side entrance.
Ideally, you would orient the street appropriately so that the lots would fall and it could be...
Yes, a developer's heart would do that.
So obviously, topography does not always make that possibility, but that would be your first preference.
And I can't find that anywhere where it's said.
It's 3-82.
353.8 Building Zone Number One.
At the bottom of the page.
So you basically have two, two goals that are both relevant and valuable goals. The one being the energy efficiency goal and the other one being the neighborhood character and pedestrian friendliness of the neighborhood goal. In some cases, both goals will be able to be achieved, and in others, they're going to conflict with each other. And it sort of depends on the condition of the one.
Is there an allowance for that in the, in the other neighborhood?
Well, the other neighborhood doesn't have...
It doesn't say that.
Doesn't have this requirement.
Restriction.
One thing to think about here would be to provide a little leeway so that not all buildings necessarily have to, but you certainly would not want a street where
No.
There were no, no front doors facing the road. I mean, that would not be a nice street to lock down. So I think we have to balance these.
No, 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 I agree.
Also no windows. I haven't really seen any picture of houses with windows.
It's very bizarre.
Yeah, it's bizarre.
My building doesn't have the entrance facing the street or perpendicular to the street.
And that is not a, from a pedestrian-oriented thing, is not the best approach. In many cases, you see that particularly when multifamily is done, that the the front entrances are oriented to wherever the cars are parked. And that's not exactly the pattern we're trying to...
So, so in the traditional neighborhood, you have that, but you don't have it in the other ones. So there's enough flexibility between the whole mix.
And there's also the point that, you know, many of us have a front door that we don't...
Never use.
Nobody, this, this, this provision does not say that everyone must enter and exit the front door facing the street. It just has to be there.
You could even have a bookcase up against it inside the house.
Or, or it opens into a wall, you know.
Our 1910 house came with a front door that has no key. So you can lock it and unlock it from the inside, but not from the outside, and no one knows what ever happened to the key.
So you have, you lock your door?
Yes, we do.
You could get a new lock.
We could, but it's the original 1910 lock.
Yeah, no, I would keep it and just be like, keep it as a side door.
We, we have a, yeah, we have a side door.
It's New York State.
It's different.
Different over there, over that mountain. All right.
So, yeah, and then we have a little bit of language in here that speaks to having some front porches. Now, not every building needs to have one, but we want some of that. That's one of the characteristics of a pedestrian-friendly traditional neighborhood is that idea of the front porch.
All right. Do the cottages have front porches too?
The cottages had porch requirements, yes.
They do?
Yes.
I missed that.
In there. Each cottage needs to have a roof-open porch, at least 80 square feet in size.
All right, are we ready for camp?
Yeah, the one other provision in here, and this is something that I think we may need to think about, because I was thinking about it in terms of through the housing project behind the, you know, in terms of how much open space we're requiring, because that was like a two, what was that? Was it almost a, it wasn't quite a three-acre lot, right? It was like 2.75 or something like that. So if we're requiring a minimum, so half-acre or 5%, I think you might want to think about varying that maybe by district or something?
What about, um, well, for inst, for instance, I think the park, the pocket park, as it were, on, not Washington, but Pine? There's a little tiny, tiny park there, and it's only like, it's maybe a third of an acre or a quarter of an acre. But in going past there growing up, it seems like it's, it works just fine for that area. It's really small. It has a little playground. People are there all the time in the summer, even doing cookouts and stuff there, so...
Yeah, so...
Maybe a quarter?
It could, yeah, I think it might need to scale a little bit more with neighborhood a half might be given the scale.
Half a ton of big, yeah.
The developments, you're likely to, you probably are likely to see some 2-point-something-or-other-acre developments come in.
Yeah.
Well, what's 5% of two or three acres?
So an acre is 43... 2,000-some square feet per acre?
So like, if it was like a two-acre thing, it would be like 4,000-ish square feet, which is roughly how much of an acre?
A tenth.
A tenth of an acre.
Tenth of an acre, okay. So that would be, I mean, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that the 5% provision might address, might counterbalance the half-acre part.
You could leave the 5% and then drop it to a quarter.
Yeah.
To a quarter, yeah.
That's a good idea.
So campus development. So this helps with some of the institutional components that you have here, and also would be useful for office. And we discussed when we were talking about this, the need for adding the industrial into this. So this could, we might need to work on this a little bit to get more of the business and industrial uses and handle light industrial stuff. Because when I wrote this, I was thinking a little more strictly institutional, but I think we can adapt this to pull in a little more of the business components. So it also does a lot coverage for the entire development at 70%. And will calculate floor area ratio for the development as a whole as well, so that an individual lot may be more dense than would otherwise be allowed as long as the whole development is not.
Brandy, can we just back up with the industrial? Because just something caught my eye with there not being any residential density. This is still tied to the, maybe it's not important, because in the industrial, we don't allow residential. So therefore, an industrial campus development couldn't go with residential. So never mind, sorry.
Never mind.
Now, that brings up a good, that brings up a good question though about the Delta Campus, which was...
The original vision.
Was industrial with on-site housing.
Yes, light industry.
Yeah.
And housing on a beach line.
And is actually kind, I mean, I know there's two competing things because they, they, the forces at BE have said that we don't have enough industrials area in this town for people to build and you want to keep it. But then you're also thinking about the other side, which is, I mean, traditionally...
The force of the beast.
Traditionally, housing was always built right, right in the, you know, if I'm...
It sounds like one of the reasons for zoning, no?
Yeah, yes, I think, I mean, it's really, yeah, there's a really intriguing history, you know, to be told about, you know, something like ST organ and STville, and so, yeah, it's worth 4,000. And we think it's cute now, but, you know...
Mostly because the smoke isn't belching out of the factory anymore.
We're not listening to, you know, Swedes swearing at each other, beating organs out and whatever they did.
Yeah.
Got no idea how they did it, or, you know, the smell of the paint and the smoke and all that kind of stuff. So it's all kind of cute now. In other settings, you know, I think more like full flex and the wood press, you know, factories from that era, the post-war era, if frequently generated neighborhoods of modest capes and, and ranches and stuff as workforce housing close by. You know, there's remnants of it around.
And it's problematic in some places. We do get complaints of some of the industrial noises affecting residential.
That conflict is still present. A track that came up with the yogurt factory development in that, in that camp, on that campus, actually.
I mean, the real downside of that is even if you have a district or a PUD that certainly people should know going in is industrial, that once there's residential component in it, those eventually become the people who resist there being other types of industrial stuff. You know, even if they know full well in advance that this is what the intended mix is, as time, as time goes and people come and go and the thing evolves, those become the people who say no.
Yeah, in, in my mind, the traffic conflict is probably the contemporary era is the first thing that, that emerges. My toddler and your 18-wheeler is a bad, you know, is a bad mix and...
Noise of operation.
Yeah, there's noise and noise of operation. So at the very least, you might have, you know, a residential neighborhood that backs on to an industrial area with separate means of access to the residential neighborhood and stuff. So proximity, but not actual co-location. I could see that working under certain sorts of circumstances, but it can still be problematic as well. So, and, and in the end, the market is dictating the outcome to some extent of Delta Campus. I don't know what or if is ever gonna happen to that top end of the housing. And, you know, clearly, there's not enough interest in it from a residential property estate standpoint to make it happen.
Yeah, well, there, there was also the complete collapse of the financial market. So there was a very big macroeconomic force on that.
Well, yeah, but it's been around a long time.
Yeah. Okay, well, I just wanted to throw it out there to see what people thought.
Okay, so campus development.
In terms of the uses, this is the one area within the PUDs where we do provide a little bit of flexibility for the uses. So in the campus development, essentially any, this is written right now, any institutional office use that's allowed in that district, whether it's permitted or conditional, would be a permitted use within a campus PUD. And then other uses could potentially be approved if they were an accessory or supportive use to that principal purpose. So one might think of something like a, an industrial complex that had some dining, you know, had a restaurant that is primarily intended to serve the people who work in that complex. There might be a little bit of additional traffic into it, but it's not really scaled to the point where it's meant to be attracting a lot of outside traffic. And some of the signage requirements in here will get at that. It's gonna be a little harder to attract a wider audience to your dining restaurants here inside the campus development. So there is some flexibility here for that, and I think this is an area where you asked me to tighten the language up a little bit, provide a little more clarity.
Yeah, I mean, if we can like, what, what is incidental and supportive?
Yeah, define this a little bit.
Would this be like, I mean, I mean, I've seen this in the Boston area, but, we're not Boston, but there's an office complex that built within it is a daycare center.
Yes.
There's a gym and maybe even a little bank where people could have small little, almost not really carts, but like a little hairdresser or a laundry dry, you know, just things that, so that within this complex, people come to work, but they can get a number of things done at the same time because it's a...
Yeah, it is intended to allow for those types of, of things. And it's, and we need to work on the scale.
They don't have the density of population like they do in a Boston, you know, like Cambridge or something, but, you know...
I think the daycare, the dining thing...
Sandwich shop, hairdresser, dry cleaner, you know, well, no dry cleaner.
Not dry cleaner so much, at least not here, but...
Nobody here uses...
It's like how they have a Starbucks inside the Pentagon.
That explains a lot.
It's, it's actually the, the highest grossing Starbucks in the world.
Oh, I'm sure.
So they're all, they're all hopped up on caffeine?
That's why we go to bars so much.
Trigger happy.
Now that'd be doing flat whites and knocking out, David.
I know, two shots of a Sprite, bro.
Take over the world, bro.
All right. Well, that's good. That's one thing I think we had always talked about.
I am gonna tweak that language a little bit to try to make that a little more clear.
Right.
But the basic principle is that, you know, those things shouldn't be at a scale that
Right.
outdoes the principal purpose.
Right.
In terms of building design, the only real standard we've got here is to look at where they have bought whatever neighborhood they have joined and think about, you know, campus buildings may be fairly large and scaling that down or setting back the bigger buildings a little further from those boundaries so that we get a more compatible transition.
I think you should insist on flat roads.
There is a minimum open space requirement within the campus. Pedestrian access language. In terms of vehicles and parking, it tries to keep that stuff to the periphery and think about traffic impacts on the neighborhood. That's one thing, you know, it's gonna be a high-traffic thing. If a lot of people coming to employment or, or school or something like that, thinking about how those, where those access points are in the neighborhood. And in terms of signage, thinking about the site as a whole and regulating it as a common premises for signs.
All right, zero net energy.
So this is allowed in all of the zoning districts except for the rural district. And the reason I didn't put it in the rural district is because it does have the density bonus that goes with it. If you are comfortable with allowing the density bonus in the rural district, which I didn't know if you were, then it could go there as well. But in some ways, some of the, what you're trying to achieve through, you know, zero energy would be much better certainly closer to the developed area than out there.
Kind of futile.
Yes, to offset the amount of...
So the basic premise of this particular development is that they will, because it's not a very big section, but that basically they're gonna generate their own energy somehow.
Yeah, they're gonna generate as much as they use somehow. You know, it's gonna be a combination of high-performance with buildings.
Building envelopes and renewable energy usage. Now, okay, does that renewable energy have to be generated on the site?
No, it does not. There is a provision here that says it can be done off-site.
I actually had concerns about that part, especially that it says they can do up to 70% off-site, which is quite a, quite a high percentage off-site, but that it has to be within five miles. And I found that to be, yeah, it says that, I found that to be very strange, especially...
Well, we don't want you to get credit for like buying renewable energy in Kansas.
Well, but then the...
It does, sort of, part of it, yeah, I know, basically.
But, but the, the other interesting thing is...
It's bizarrely specific.
Yeah.
You know, where I'm kind of like, what, what is it I don't know about?
Things going on, bro.
Well, and also, there's, there's not... In terms of making renewable, renewable energy sites, it's, it's very hard to locate those. I mean, they, in terms of finding a field where you can put solar panels or something like that, and five miles isn't necessarily very... and five miles isn't necessarily very accommodating.
Well, I think I chose the five miles with the idea that you're basically keeping it within town roughly. I mean, you may be over, depending on where you are in town, you may go beyond, but.
Could be guilty.
Well, the, and then the, the other thing is, though, is that there's been this really, really big push by, especially supported by efficiency Vermont and everyone towards net metering. And so, I mean, if it's, if they're buying renewable energy from a solar field on the other end of the state, what, what does it really matter? It's still renewable energy.
So I guess, I mean, this is a policy decision for you to make. So in terms of allowing them to do a certain percentage of it off-site, particularly, I think, if you're going to allow for this type of development in the urban center area, for instance, it might just, in terms of physical real estate, you don't want land devoted necessarily to solar panels in some of these higher density districts. So it does make sense to think about that. Um, there may be, obviously, some of it can be building mounted, but to some extent, you may not be able to get.
Some interference or even glare.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, they may be like getting their energy from, say, Sosoma, which is per, you know, generating it on some way. And then they're going to, this little community or development is going to, you know, pipe their energy from them or something, I don't know, I'm making it up.
How is that, sorry, how would this be monitored? Where they're getting, how much of the energy they're getting and where?
I think that's the biggest question for me is like, if you're under contract to get renewable energy from someone, you know, I don't think you're necessarily going to know its origin.
And so that's, I think that that is.
You wouldn't keep on checking.
You wouldn't keep on checking, and that's one of the issues with this. I think you'd be far better off if it was a piece, if this was an energy, you know, if they did have an off-site solar farm somewhere that this is on, land that is owned in conjunction with, or at least long-term leased in conjunction with the development. Because I think that idea that you'd be buying it on contract from somebody leads to a very likely possibility that that might not continue into the future and you are giving them an upfront density bonus.
So I think the easiest way to do it then is if you want to say it's zero net energy as a develop, as a PUD, um, approach, then, then the site needs to achieve zero net energy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes much more sense to me.
You know, so it's like, so rather, you know, because, you know.
It's a very specific thing.
You know, I could have a, you know, dentist's office and then decide that I'm going to buy all my power from renewable sources and then want to, you know, do my zero energy thing and completely just do whatever, you know. It seems to me that the intent is that you're talking about a parcel of land where between the building design and the provision for renewable energy generation on the site, it, it calculates, you know, it calculates out a zero net energy.
Like Cob Hill does that. They have a wood heat boiler that heats their whole, well, we could just call it a, it's a co-housing, but you could call it a subdivision. And there's, there's the energy, the, you know, the wood comes from the land.
Right.
And it's all underground to each house and.
I just think if it's ended up depending on contract, there's no way we're going to monitor it. I mean, you know, you could, you could, you could model a zero energy project, that involves net metering and still find three years later that actually, oh, we've kind of this calculated, we're not really.
And that is one of the downsides of giving bonuses for energy performance is that operation is, over time, can significantly affect.
Right.
People can choose to operate it the way it's supposed to be or not.
Well, particularly with, if, so, so for instance, you take this example, you go back up to thirty-five, three fifty-five E, use, any use permitted or conditional allowed, will be allowed. So I've developed a small zero energy light industry PUD, and I have, you know, a bakery and a bicycle repair shop and something else, and everyone's hip to the whole thing. And then, you know, somebody moves out and then somebody else moves in and they have much bigger energy usage requirements. And then all of a sudden, they're forced to buy regular electricity. Then we'd never find that out, you know, you know, there's just, there's too many.
I'm wondering if it's, if it's necessary. I mean, we, we don't have anything that would stop, you know, a cottage cluster or a campus from.
Achieving zero energy.
From doing this.
That's right.
So do we even need this section because they're already getting bonuses?
Yeah, and I kind of.
The density has increased there.
Yeah, and then adding in the electric car thing, that, that's a requirement that just again.
I mean, the electric car can be dealt with under our parking standards and, you know, to some extent.
Also, also to the, the fact that, so it says that they want the renewable energy to equal what they're using, but it doesn't include the transportation. And no, I mean, I don't, I don't know how electric car chargers work in houses, but I can't imagine it's going to run on a whole separate thing from what, from, from their house, from their electrical system of their house. So like, how do you even account for, you know, oh, my car is going to use this much energy that I can buy from the grid and I need to do this much energy?
I even have a problem with giving a, a development, like a floor area bonus because it should be a small house.
It's apples and oranges to me to give a density bonus for something that's like based on energy use.
So do you want to, do you want to talk to more?
Take it out then.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I mean, because I want to respect your work and so.
Well, it's, I mean, it's an option out there. I mean, I think municipal plans have a lot of language about how they want to encourage efficiency. And, and short, very few municipalities want to go the building codes route where they actually mandate this stuff. So what can you do to encourage it? Bonuses are one way to encourage it. I think I am, I see the dangers too. I, I don't disagree with you about you are giving an upfront bonus for something that over the long term is very hard to maintain, to know that it's being maintained.
Right.
Well, and then, and, and if it's not maintained, what do you do? You know, you can't take it back.
Right, because they've already built extra buildings.
Move out of that fourth story.
Although I, I, I am a particular fan, though, of the, the encouragement of the high, of the high-performance buildings and the requirement for the electric vehicles. So it's like, part of me kind of wants to scrap the whole thing, but then the other part of me likes that encouragement.
Yeah, how do you put that in?
Well, besides density, what, what, how, is there a way to have? Right, no, is there another carrot that can be included that would encourage this?
Is its own savings, you know, its own energy savings is the carrot.
You know, with the high-performance buildings, is there anybody here that's, you know, has the technical skills to be able to?
Verify.
Verify, and we don't have building codes, so that one's kind of a tough one. And the electric vehicle.
Well, I mean, if you built the campus, you tried to build a, a high-performance building. I mean, I think it probably pretty much is, or at least it was in the beginning.
It's another one of those things where you're, you know.
It's made, you know, optical.
Yeah, I know what you mean, I don't, it's okay.
I don't know what the percentage is, but I know it was.
What's another thing where it gets designed to be high-performance, but then, you know, as it goes along?
Get bastardized.
We don't have.
Yeah.
Well, I say we applaud the sentiment and get rid of it.
Well, the whole, are you saying, are you saying the whole, the whole thing? Section three fifty-five, get rid of the whole.
At least as it stands here.
Yeah, I mean, if, if things, you know, if, if Vermont is somehow going to inspect zero energy houses in the future, we could add it in.
I just don't know how we can maintain the, you know, I don't want to even use the word enforcement. I just don't know how we can initially verify the design and then ensure that over time.
Well, see, what I, see, because what I was thinking was keeping it, but only removing section G. So that they, they would get a density bonus. They, there are the high-performance part, thirty-five percent above the state standards. So there are standards there. And then requiring them to have electric vehicles. I mean, those are things that we can enforce. Whereas the section G is much more wishy-washy in terms of enforcement.
We have three fifty-five I, which is the performance guarantee, which I don't, I don't believe we have the ability to actually enforce that.
I would, so I would, I mean, I would propose just taking out G and I, wait, wait, hold on.
I think F is a bit of a problem though for us too.
Yeah.
Ooh, let's see, F, G, I.
Well, if you get rid of those, then what's the whole point?
I will say the initial inspection, you will get those results because they have to do the.
They have to do the audit.
The audit now. And so that is actually demonstrable, um, so.
But you're also giving an upfront bonus and then waiting on the desk for the results.
And they have to, yeah. And that's always been one of the problems with doing the bonuses for, for, for energy efficient houses.
So, so.
Well, I, I love the idea, I just don't think we're there yet.
No, and I think it's, it needs to be more comprehensive or something, bigger, more all-encompassing in some way. That probably we're not ready to go there yet. I mean, I think some places in Europe probably are moving toward having kinds of these things in their, in their building things and that all new buildings have to be in this kind of way, but we don't do that here.
No.
We're not ready.
Yeah, I think, so you can.
Yeah, we'll take that one out. We're simplifying these regulations.
The sentiment of it, but not the.
But we'll all keep it in the back of our minds.
Or should it be left in and then just no one would ever?
And whatever do it.
And whatever do it. I'm kind of sad to take it out because I feel like sometimes you have to create, you know, you have to create things and then we get to work into it. But, but the carrot seems weird to me, you know what I mean? Like, it would be much more logical to have there be some sort of property tax break or something.
I mean, you might throw it back and down.
That's not going to happen.
I mean, I think that's, I think what I would say is that some other mechanism, I, I don't think zoning is necessarily the best mechanism to, to deliver this.
To encourage this.
And maybe if something comes up in some other world, yeah, like property tax reductions or, you know, some tax credit scheme or something, then it might be a complimentary zoning thing that we could do. But I think we're really short on for documentation of the original concept and then making sure that it delivers as intended. And my very limited experience with high-performance buildings is a little bit like high-performance other things, like washing machines, that sometimes they just fall apart.
Well, again, the, the benefit of it is its own energy savings.
Yes, and, yeah, and that's it, you get it or you don't. I'm just staring at the pieces on the floor.
Is there some, is there some sort of, uh, political?
Oh, the energy.
Sav that we need to communicate with the energy committee on? I mean, like, is this, there's a lot of, like, referencing the energy committee in this. If we just scrapped this, is there a problem?
No.
No.
I mean, again.
Just want to make sure there's not a whole committee of people who've done a lot of work that are going to be like, oh.
They're also not a body with an enforcement function or the skills or ability to work this stuff through. So, I mean, you know, as, as they currently configure.
Okay. Okay, so we talked the conservation subdivision, and this is the one that probably would get the most use of your.
Which is good because I, I, I like the idea of them using that whole formula that we came up with about extracting out the sensitive plants.
Oh, that we were, yeah, so yes, me too.
I just want to throw, throw out that I need to leave in twenty minutes.
Yeah, I need to.
If we can at least get through conservation subdivision, then I think I'm comfortable with where we are to put this. Because the idea of having this extra meeting was to get it to the point where we could put it out and I think that would cover it.
Can't we just take the things we like from the energy one and just shove it in this conservation subdivision? It's all conserving, right?
Yeah, well, we sort of dip out of the conservation stuff already in a way.
So the conservation subdivisions, yeah, would be allowed in the residential neighborhood, the rural residential and rural districts, and they're required for all the major subdivisions in the rural districts.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
So the debt, there isn't any real. There isn't an increase in the same way, it's not like one hundred and fifty or two hundred percent. It's just the maximum density, um, as a, based on the applicable zoning district standards, so it's total area divided by the number of lots size. So for your rural districts, since you were previously subtracting land out, that builds in a de facto bonus. So that builds back the bonus that you were creating, so.
And this is actually more of a bonus.
It is more of a bonus.
I mean, if you recall some of the constraints mapping we did, this is actually a big bonus. It's bigger than what we.
And like I said before, in actuality, and mostly there's going to be other factors that are going to be more of a limiting factor on how many buildings and lots get proposed than just the zoning district density. So instead of having that argument about you've taken away the density, this is your way to have your density if you think you can put in the septic system to make it work. What it does require is a minimum sixty percent conservation area. So sixty percent of its space, forty percent can be built.
Sixty, right?
Sixty, yep. And it sets up the primary and secondary things, which are similar to how your draft was set up in terms of what needs to be within the conservation areas. And has standards for how those conservation lands can be used. And then within the development areas, um, basically it goes back to that idea of creating clusters. This one's set at three to twelve, um, because that triggers, that goes back to your major subdivision and your clustering around. So if you get more than, um, that, you're on roads and things. Having lots that are, many of them would have access to the conservation area, which is one of the benefits of the conservation subdivision.
I have a question about, or I would like to maybe understand better. Three fifty-six I, requiring them to go before the conservation commission.
We talked a little bit about this in previously, and, um, I think that was one thing that's sort of a question as to whether it's even a role that your conservation commission would want to take. Um, in some municipalities, the conservation commission, under statute, the conservation commission is an advisory committee to the municipality, to the development review board, to the planning commission, select boards, um, can, um, be asked to do this sort of thing and have a role in doing this. Um, one would think that the conservation commission would have people with, um, conservation background and knowledge of the areas and could help with that prioritization. Because one of the main things that you're trying to achieve with this is figuring out what to leave as the open space and where to put the development. And the reason you have this two lists of primary and secondary conservation resources is the recognition that you can't necessarily protect it all. And so there has to be some prioritization about what's important on this particular piece of property and how best to organize the development. And so that is a potential place that the conservation commission could have a role. It isn't something that your conservation commission has done in the past.
Let me ask you this, do the review procedures state that you should have a pre-meeting with the town?
That's the idea of how that would go through the, that you would have sort of that pre, a pre-application review.
And can't they serve that same function as identifying the resource areas that the conservation committee would?
And the tree board in this particular case too.
You know.
You know, you mean the town staff at their pre-application. You could, you put that in there, I guess.
See, I, I'm just.
You cannot look like little old me.
I would, I would just more, I'm more inclined to not make it a requirement and basically say if the conservation commission wants to submit an opinion for the DRB to consider or with their concerns, then that's great. But the idea of requiring them to go before a body that, again, like the energy committee, doesn't have any authority to do anything.
Well, it's not that they have no authority, they do have a, a role in state law. And they're there to help the municipality make good decisions with regard to land conservation issues, natural resource protection issues.
Don't we have some of that now in some procedure where, I don't know if it's in PUD or just subdivisions that it gets fire seized, the police see it. There is. And the, sometimes the tree board comments on it and the conservation commission.
Sometimes they comment.
I don't know what procedure that happened. Um, I don't know what procedure that happens in, and can that just be part of procedure, review procedures?
I think the-
That the comments are allowed from those groups.
The other part is, too, is that we haven't even cleared with the conservation commission that that is a role they wanna-
They would want it to be.
Oh, yeah, they would.
I think, I think, well, this is a suggestion, it's probably a good one. No, that I forgot.
So, so what are we deciding?
I was suggesting that-
Who's gonna do it?
Just put it right there.
That, uh, in the procedures, when they start down this road, they're gonna have questions. And they're gonna need to understand the mapping that's been done and the resources in these two tiers. And so, our Cracker Jack staff would probably be the best ones to show them the lay of the land.
But you could just, you could delegate that or ask the conservation committee to respond to those.
Well, I think I would, I would offer it up to the applicant if they wanted to speak to the conservation commission. They could, I mean, I wouldn't delegate it. I, at this point, there's not been an inventory done. So, I, the information that they would use, I'm probably more comfortable using than, than the resources, to be honest.
Right. In that, yeah, I think between the, the A and R Atlas and the other materials and sources that we have access to, you know, referred to frequently, I think that we probably go all the way to informing them of the materials that we'd be using and for them, and to encourage them to look at also. And if we had questions that were specific to a particular site or something, we may reach out to the conservation commission because of their known knowledge, or we may reach out to somebody else.
Yeah, like an neighbor.
So, not Rod, but definitely Sue.
So, are we, are we taking I out, then?
I would take I out.
I would propose that, yes.
Okay. So, any other questions in terms of this conservation subdivision section?
Yep.
I would rather we spend some of the time talking about the public outreach.
Yep.
But Sue was gonna say something complimentary.
Yeah, I think you did a really nice job in, um, laying out the stuff, you know, integrating the subdivision pieces and making it clearer than I think the other regulations were, so.
And particularly making sense of the P and Ds.
I find that unifying the regulations really, it just seems like a good pathway. It, it just seems to be much more logical when they're together. So, public outreach, um, preparing for next week's events.
Sweet events.
We have started the publicity train up. People have received emails. We've sent out invitations to the breakfast and lunch meetings to targeted groups. We have went out today and took videos.
Still recovering, trying to warm up.
We keep choosing really cold days to go out and do this stuff. We're photo-inventoring, and I'm putting together the presentations, um, for those upcoming meetings. We've done the press releases, the website's good. Basically, putting this part three together is the last piece of the regulations to go up. So, we're in good stead. We've gotten the venues booked for the remaining meetings in February. So, we have a solid schedule.
We, um, so the open house is Thursday, three to six, at Murmur Graduate Center, room two E. That is a drop-in, so it's probably gonna be people asking questions. So, if any of you are there with us, and I think, and you get questions, I think it's perfectly okay to-
Be like, I don't know, I really have no idea. I don't remember. What part are you talking about?
Well, it is, I mean, it's, it's pretty technical, and it's, you know, and I'd rather that they be redirected than trying to figure it out off the cuff. Um, I think that what's important for planning commissioners is kind of the overarching, you know, the aesthetic, you just, I don't know, maybe we could send some notes along to you, but it's the, you know, what are we trying to achieve? And maybe not so much at the site-specific level.
And we are gonna have people come in with, just like came to the last planning commission meeting with particular questions about their property that often can't be answered with the limited amount of information that they've just provided us. But I think what we do need to be able to do is identify the things that are asked regularly. Uh, we're gonna try to start putting together a frequently asked questions type of thing, and getting people the resources. So, telling them, you know, perhaps not directly answering their site-specific questions, pointing out what areas of the regulations are relevant to them in their area and things like that. And certainly, trying to, um, get the people who have a particular issue about their property, we can deal with them sort of more offline.
Yeah, and like, because for us in the office, I mean, there's some really important questions to ask right off the bat that you might not think of. Are you in the floodplain? Are you, you know, and they really impact the answers, so.
Yeah, I think the easiest way to go about this is that we're up here at this conceptual level and a level of generality, because we're taking the conclusions of our work in the town plan process, and we're thinking about things at a level of the, the smaller scale we're working at as a level of a neighborhood. We're generally working at the level of the district, and we're thinking about the way the whole town comes together. When people come in with their individual interests and concerns, there's a whole set of other factors that are pertinent to the answer that you give. And generally, in our experience in the office, when people call or, or come in to do that, we find ourselves, you know, pulling the file and looking at a map and looking very carefully at, you know, their precise parcel. And sometimes, what they think is the situation is not exactly the situation. And sometimes, they go away. Generally, I'd say they go away with the sense that things are a lot easier than they thought they were gonna be. Um, but there's a level of specificity that just, we wanna play at that scale of neighborhood to district at the very minimum.
Because, because that's really what our, our planning role is, to set policy and to preserve neighborhoods, things like that.
You know, it's, it's like, you know, I mean, there are obvious parallels, but we just don't wanna get into that kind of specific side-by-side. Because then you end up in sort of a weird bargaining position where, you know, are you looking at an exception that proves the rule? And all those kinds of things, and you get into this weird scenario where, um-
What-ifs.
Yeah, it, it's just not a fruitful realm of discussion at all for the, for the person asking the question or, you know, other people in the room.
Okey-dokey.
This is great, though.
The last, uh, well, we just want, this is more for you and, for Sue. The event where we're targeting the downtown, I can get an email blast to, to the downtown group, so, you know, if we've got those details.
That's in the second February, yeah.
I'm probably gonna deal with those emails, like, immediately following next week's bump. So, if you can get it together, it'll be at some point next week, a list.
But you want your constant, you want it to-
You drive, to run from your constant contact.
I'll, I'll get you the list.
Get me the list, and then I'll be ready to go.
It's pretty unwieldy, but I'll talk. I mean, I don't know, I don't know who did it, but-
If it's in Excel, if you can do first name, last name, email, it's great.
Okay.
If it isn't like that, that's fine, too, but if it is, that's fine.
How about a motion?
I move that the planning commission itself adjourn. The PSD can do whatever they want.
Second, ETS.
I thought you were going to say to a sauna or something, so we can just-